Can we call the roll please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan? Lipscomb?
Here.
Obrich?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Frash?
Here.
Vincentza?
Here.
Six members present, one absent.
Okay, we were going to be without a law director this evening also with that family issue of obligations he's attending. And our law director has got some health problems in her family that she needs to address. So we will be without them. First item on the agenda is the minutes for the August 21st meeting. Everyone receive those minutes. Does anyone have any question on those? Okay, hearing members will entertain a motion to accept the August 21st minutes as written. Fifty second?
I would.
That's second. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on accepting the minutes for the 21st.
Butler?
Upstate.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes for the 21st meeting been approved. Okay, we've received a next item under new business request for the homecoming parade on October 4th at 7:00 PM. Checked with Matt's, with council opinion on that, nothing's changed. Matt says there's no issues with it. It'll be the same as previous year. So I think all it requires is a motion to allow them to hold the parade.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
Okay, the date for the homecoming parade has been approved. Next item, we had a request from Chamber Commerce Cindy, or Cindy Wendy Anderson about some items. And we'll let her present what she wants to present to you.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Wendy Anderson. I'm the executive director for the St. Clairsville area Chamber of Commerce. This evening, I'm asking council to approve three dates that the chamber requests that the main street be closed. October 27th will be our Halloween bash from Route 9 light to Market Street from 5:00 to 8:00 is the first one. The second one is November the 18th. This will be our tree lighting night. So we would like from Route 9 to Market Street again to be closed. Now, if funds are available, which we are pursuing right now, we would like to have an ice skating rink brought into town. We've already talked to the woman, she was there today. She measured the road, everything is perfectly fine. It just takes a couple hours to set up and then a couple hours to tear down. If we get the funds, we are asking if we could shut the street down from 2:00 to 10:00 on Saturday the 14th.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, Saturday the 18th. If not, if we don't get the funds, which we're short like $2,000, if we don't get the funds, then it'll be from, what did we say?
5:30?
To seven.
5:30 to seven for Santa's arrival and we're going to do the tree. This year, we have a major sponsor, Ford is going to be our major sponsor. And the Christmas parade will be December 3rd and that's sponsorship of WVU Medicine and Reynolds Memorial Hospital. And that's going to be broadcast live this year. And we need the streets closed down like from 1:00 to 6:00.
And by closing, you just mean cars, right? Like you can't have traffic?
No traffic, yes. Especially for the Christmas parade, which Matt has already, we've already talked to him about it. So he knows where we shut the streets down so we can do lineup. Lineups at 1, parade begins at 3:00. And we have to do it a little bit early this time because of the live televising of it. But like I said, for just the Halloween bash, it would be from Route 9 to Market Street. And that would be that area right, right in, right in Main Street, right downtown to the crosswalk, I should say.
And Matt, you're good with all these dates?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's ice rink though. Can you say a little more about that?
So we all go other places to have fun. And I want to bring the fun back to St. Clairsville. And we've been trying and Lisa, I'm here with Lisa Kintler, who's my administrative assistant. And we have come up with some really great ideas. This one, we also, we saw it at Barnesville because they have it for like days, which we know we can't have it for days because we really don't have the place to put it. But this one, she brings it in and it's all sports fun. And she brings it in, she sets it up, it's synthetic ice, but she does have special ice gates for people. You can put 30 people on it at one time. And there's, we're going to have a regular ice rink. So some of our sponsors that have already, you know, pledged to do a sponsorship will get their banners put around the rink.
So like you're not freezing the streets?
No. No, it is a, it's a, they set it up. So there's like a plastic and then they put, it's synthetic. So they, whatever means they do, I don't know. But they don't freeze the streets. But they tear it up, they put it up and then they tear it down. It only takes two hours to tear it down.
And where do you envision this would be, like right in front of the courthouse?
She looked at it, yes. It'll be like where the crosswalk is, right there. It'll be right there because that's the flattest spot. Because if you go further down like to West Bank, it would start to go on an incline. So this way, the flattest part will be from the crosswalk to where Charlie Beal's offices. That will be it. We measured it.
Cool.
It's going to be fun. Yeah, it's going to be fun. And we're going to bring a lot of people into town to also not only just light our tree because we are switching our Christmas parade to a completely different month. And we're changing the time. So we wanted to do a big event where people will remember us by. And they'll make it a chance, you know, they'll, they'll want to come to St. Clairsville because we also want to do food trucks and vendors, like Faisalys, to bring some Christmas wreaths and things like that. Different Christmas vendors.
Do the food trucks impact the local restaurants?
Mary Jane, she and I had a conversation about this. The day she was complaining to me was because of, it was Woodfire Pizza. Woodfires in a completely different league, all on their own. They bring lots of people. And that day, she did not do well. Although I did talk to her and I said, instead of doing anything special, do like a dessert pizza. Bring over coupons to those people who are standing outside waiting for their pizza, which, you know, she didn't listen. But the other ones, they're not really well received. Like, let's see, what is it? 470 BBQ or 740 BBQ. He does okay, but he's not, you know, he'll do okay. They don't do a lot of business. They do okay.
I just wondered if our, our restaurants in town that, you know, they're all the time, if they're negatively impacted by food trucks?
The only one that I said was Mary Jane's. I've talked to Audrey at Geocentis and she said, no, it doesn't bother her one bit.
DeCarlos?
DeCarlos, I really, I don't have any conversation with him, so I don't talk to them. But the ones that come, like for Woodfire, you know, they do the pizza. But the other ones that come, they do barbecue, they do tacos, they do things that aren't done. Like we don't have, you know, a Mexican restaurant. Now, sometimes Newlstown will do, you know, tacos or something like that. But they are there till, they set up about 11:00 and they're usually anymore, they're done by 1:00. They don't stay the whole time they used to.
And are you just thinking the food trucks for the 18th?
Yes.
Or the 27th also the Halloween bash?
I think we have one on that day, if he can, if he will confirm with us. We have one on that date. But the 18th for the tree lighting, I would like to get, I really would like to get something like a hot chocolate truck or something. You know, if I could get something like that to come into town.
What's the time for the tree lighting?
I'm sorry?
What's the time for the tree lighting?
For the, for the actual lighting of the tree or?
Yeah, 7:00, did we say 7:00?
Yeah, it would be around 7:00.
Seven, eight?
Yeah, 7:00 in the evening. Yeah, 7:00 in the evening. And we're hoping that Santa Claus, it depends on if we get the ice rink or not. If not, he's either going to come in on a Ford truck or he's going to come in on a horse drawn sleigh. I mean, I know that's totally different, but it just depends on what we have going on uptown.
What do you need?
Any other questions? Okay, so basically you want council's approval for the Halloween bash to close the street? And that is the date of?
That is the 27th on Friday. We also know that is the beginning of the football playoffs. We understand that, we did it last year and we had, we had a nice turnout and we just called, you know, like tailgating before the parade, the pregame. The 27th would be October 27th from 5:00 to 8:00. November 18th, 2:00 to 10:00 with the ice rink or 5:30 to 7:30 without the ice rink. And December 3rd, which would be our Christmas parade through town.
Okay, so you would need the street closed for both of those?
Three of those.
All three of those, three of those.
All three, right?
Yeah.
Will you keep us updated on the ice rink?
Absolutely.
You don't have to come back, but if you just let me?
Yeah, as soon as we find out if we have our sponsors, we're just, I'm here, we're waiting. We have, it's almost the $7,000.
Wow.
So we have all the money except for $2,000.
Wow, good job.
So yeah, so we're trying really hard.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Wendy? Yeah.
I think we might be able to help you with that.
With what?
Ice, ice rink.
The ice rink.
Yes!
I mean.
Did you hear that? I heard it.
I mean, I'll talk to the rec center and see, but we've been doing fairly well down there.
Okay.
So they could line up almost perfectly with the position of the rec who's going through stuff. So unless council has an issue with it, I mean, we change some stuff around for other things. I think this would be a good, good investment for the city.
Well, I mean, my first question is the money there. And then I know that we've made other openers, right? Like for additional junior sports.
I think it'll be a good, I mean, that's a, if you guys agree to that, I don't want anybody to come back and say we shouldn't have done that.
I'm sorry, do they only write up for the day? Like what if we want to try it down there for a month?
Oh, she does that. She will do that. Barnsville has it for three days.
This won't take from junior sports.
No, we're going to put it in that budget actually next year.
For this year too, is my question.
Well, we have, I mean, we haven't agreed on any money for junior sports this year.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we, not, listen, I'm, I'm.
Different funds, we should be able to.
I just don't want then, because we've had this conversation and I don't want to then say, well, we did that. Nothing against gill icing, right? All that stuff, so nothing against that at all. Just want to make sure that, you know.
I know what you mean.
Okay.
Yeah, but it will be in next year's budget for junior sports. We've already talked about.
Right, but we are also talking about this year. So I just want to make sure that we're.
We haven't made any decision on this year.
But we have made that request, so I just want to make sure that.
It's still in the process.
One, one more together.
And we can come up with an exact amount we can give you. Once we get all the sponsorships that we know in, because we have, they have by the end of this week. Because it can't wait anymore, she needs it, she's got one left.
Yeah.
To your point, you can do it. It's like $10,000.
I think Barnsville's was 10, between 10 and 12,000.
For three days.
Yeah, for three days.
Okay, I'm just saying.
And I know it's just, you know, like 7,000, but we're getting a bigger one than Barnsville because our street can handle it. And there's no heavy, there's no weight to it. It's synthetic, so it's easy.
Yeah.
Everything will be taken care of. They take care of the skates, they take care of the people, they bring their own people in because we don't know how to do that.
That sounds cool.
The other thing was you didn't mention the art walk.
Oh, the art walk?
Well, we're not going to close the street down for that.
Not going to close the street, but.
No, we're going to do the art walk.
Promotion.
Oh, so we're going to do an art walk, which will be October the 5th. And we are working with, I'm going to mess this up, the Main Street Association, the Small Business Association, that there, there is one downtown now. So we are bringing in all kinds of local artists and we are going to put them in our shops. Like we're going to have one in ours. We asked John Tomlin if we could use his building and we're going to put in a couple artists in there. I'm going to look into WSO Jazz to Go Wheeling Symphony to bring a jazz band up. We already have confirmed a lot of artists, probably 20 artists that are going to make their way into St. Clairsville.
How long do I have to tell you a little for a couple paintings?
You can, you can come here anytime. Yeah, we'll find a spot for you.
Thank you.
But yeah, we can do that. So that is our, that's, that's the other thing that we have to handle. We have a whole bunch of things going on.
Good.
Just a whole bunch.
Before you go, Jim, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
For the art walk?
No, because they're not closing the street.
Yeah, they're not closing the street.
Do we need a motions minute for these three dates?
Yes, yes, you do.
Before you go, just let us do this.
Okay, okay.
And Matt, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, and we're not worried about like no street damage or?
No street damage.
All right.
Okay, so we will need a motion on each date to close the street for the council. So they'll have to be addressed one at a time each. I assume we have, but. We have the date for the bash.
October 27th.
Well, the car show was the 17th, that's when I was going to bring up in there. So the art walk was the 15th, the Halloween bash was the 27th. November 18th is the Christmas tree, December 3rd is the Christmas parade. So we need the Halloween bash, the Christmas tree and the parade.
Okay, let's.
Do we need something for the car show?
Well, that's something separate, I don't know if that's.
Are you involved in the car show?
No, that is the Small Business Association, we're just promoting it.
Okay.
That's ours.
Because there's the two other items. I didn't know what, but I had them in here to discuss since we didn't have legislation.
Would be the Halloween bash, 27th. Okay, they're requesting the street be closed on.
October 27th.
October 22nd for the Halloween.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven?
27.
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion.
Okay, we need a motion for the street on October 27th to the Halloween bash.
I'll make it.
We're giving a second.
One of these days.
Let's see.
You can do the next one.
Take a roll call vote.
So I want to say what the motion is though, right? I want to make the motion that we close the streets on October 7th, 27th for the Halloween bash from 5:00 to 8:00.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, will that take a roll call vote?
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members in favor.
Okay, the date to close the street for the Halloween bash has been approved. And this is, I already talked to Matt, he's got no problem with closing the street down on that. Okay, the next one would be the tree lighting.
November 2.
On the 18th. 2:00 to 10:00 PM.
November 2.
November 18th.
Be November 18th for the tree lighting. So we need a motion. Because that will require the street to be closed also.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that the streets be closed from Route 9 to Market Street on 11/18 of 2023. From 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the tree lighting.
Okay, we have a motion, we need a second, let's see.
Oh, yeah.
Take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Okay, and we have the Christmas parade.
December 3rd.
December 3rd and that's.
1/6.
What is it?
1/6.
The Christmas parade is 1/6.
Lineups at 1, parade at 3, 1 to 6.
Okay, the street light be closed 1 to 6 for the Christmas parade now. We need a motion to close the street. Do we have that 1 to 6?
1 to 6.
1 to 6 for the Christmas parade.
It's just coke.
It's just coke. I don't have a list of these dates, that's my problem here. Everybody's got the dates but me. Okay, so we'll need a motion to close the street for the.
Christie's.
Christie's is about a second.
Okay, take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I'm actually Christie. Jesus. Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich? I've only got 20 seconds. Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
About a second.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members in favor.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Take a roll call vote.
I wrote it down twice.
Okay, that takes care of that approval there. That should take care of all the new business in Chamber of Commerce. So we'll move on to the committee's.
Mayor report.
Mayor, it's okay. Yes, I do have a report, it'll be brief. First, I would like to take a moment to pay tribute to Attorney Charles Bean. He was a very wonderful man and he volunteered a lot of time, his wisdom and experience to make St. Clairsville a better town. So I'd like to acknowledge him and say thanks to his family for sharing him with us. So in other business, had a meeting with Daniel Mason from the Attorney General's Office. We were discussing the ongoing project from the Attorney General's Office about the veterans and the PTSD and the different treatment of veterans when the police encounter them. Matt had new information for her, which I appreciate. And she shared information with us of some of the new programs coming out of the Attorney General's Office. We were fortunate not to experience electrical damages during the night of August 25th. Thank heavens, it was a cool night. We didn't have to load the grid. We had a lot of people calling saying, I nearly lose my electric. I thought, don't call me, just be happy. But they were confused, is this the night it's supposed to happen? Yes, but it was cool, we didn't lose it. So thank you guys, thank you Donnie and everybody for keeping us with our electric. The biggest news is the fact that the I-70 project is done. Praise, praise God. But I can attest to the fact that our crews were out pulling all-nighters last Monday night. They were out to 2:00 AM, including Jeremy, on Tuesday and they were, and again, including Jeremy. And on Wednesday, they were out to 11:00. I was out at about 10 o'clock feeding them three straight nights. Those poor guys thought they were going to get out of there and it was, they hadn't had their dinner. It was like, I said, we're doing like an international tour of Epcot. One night we do Chinese, next night I took Burger King, next night it was Italian. I said, I don't want to hit every country, let's get this done. But I do thank them enormously for what they did, the time they put in. Thank you very much, Jeremy, I can't thank you enough. In fact, I was down there and I can prove it because I bought a new pair of Sperry shoes. I went down to see what they were doing and sank into mud up to my knees screaming, please pull me out of here. And they taped it prior to, of course, of getting me out. And my shoes, he did get them out, but they were at least a foot underground. So I mean, they dealt with that for three straight days, so I cannot thank you guys enough. And that was the biggest news. We also had mayor's court, we had several speeding cases, had those resolved and that's about it.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Does anybody have any questions, Beth?
I just have a comment. I just wanted to, I did this in the utility committee and I just wanted to inform council to acknowledge really the work, you know, of the, of Jer, led by Jeremy, but the other people from the, our city departments.
They busted it.
For that, water leak. I mean, you think things are going to go one way and then you always had to be prepared for them not going that way. So that, I mean, and I'll just, you know, Jeremy, I just do want to acknowledge that at any time, you really are there for those late nights and those muddy days and all that stuff that doesn't go wrong. I know that all falls kind of to you and you respond accordingly. And I just want you to know that I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Can't do it without the guys though.
Understood, they, I didn't say did any work there, I said that you were there.
Oh, no, oh, that one I was.
He was in the trench.
Yeah, I was in the hole. I have the blood to prove it.
I got a text from him Wednesday about 6 o'clock, says, I quit. I'm like, oh, I called him and said, what's wrong? He said, drive down the bridge on Reservoir, you'll see. And it looked like Old Faithful coming up on the side of the bridge. Wow.
Well, I mean, it goes back to like, I know that you, you're probably going to give us an update. I'm assuming we're going to get an update on the contract of the, the union contract you guys are negotiating. But a couple times ago, under the former administration, they took out the encom, right? And so, you know, there used to be a provision where people were paid to be in call. And with that taken out of the contract, then that does follow up the administration. And I just, I acknowledge that.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Okay, I again also have to compliment Jeremy and the crews there. They're right on top of all this stuff and I think we're very, very fortunate with the guys that we have. They, they do a pretty good, good job on short notice, so. Okay, any other comments or questions for the mayor? Okay, we'll move on to the service director, Mr. Greenwood.
Good evening, council. No legislation tonight. Elizabeth sent her apologies with her partner passing and then her dad being sick. She didn't have time. I know there's a couple of things that we need to get done, but it's kind of one of those things off the side. Couple other things under, under motions. We had a request for the car show on Main Street on September 17th from 3:00 to 6:00. They would like to have the road closed from 2:30 to 6:30. I don't think we brought this before council because this was, I just received this on the 22nd of August. So we would have already had our council meeting. So that's there. What we've got is, it says that they're going to be letting, have the road closed from the light from Route 9 to the street to Zell, the courthouse, the South Market. We're having a hot dog eating contest, must be 21 enter. So we thought we should have an EMT there. I don't feel we need to have an officer present, let me know what you think. I've talked with Matt about this, just like all the other ones. I think we're under the impression that, okay, this should be all right. If there will be guys on duty that day, so if there's something that comes up, they can just respond to that.
Jeremy, who's making the request?
Heidi Riley, manager Realtor, Cedar One Realtor and Lorhan Williams from Zell Properties. It is from the St. Clairsville Main Street Small Businesses.
What's the date to get it, please?
September 17th.
So it's a car show, so old cars? And is it benefiting whether it's just, just?
That's all I have, is what was sent in emails. I don't know anything else about it.
Can I say?
Yeah.
I think the car show is supposed to benefit the Food Pantry, I think.
Who said?
And they didn't mention anything.
The people that were here on the DORA committee meeting, she's on this association and she mentioned it at that meeting.
And I, I think Jim's right, I think she did, I remember that vaguely.
Anybody else want to say this?
I just know that we haven't, council hasn't moved on that. Administration doesn't have a problem with it. Administration doesn't have a problem with it, I think it's more and more things that we can get done in downtown, the more, more we'll have people coming in to look at things. So.
Is that a Sunday?
I do not know what that is.
It is a Sunday.
It is a Sunday.
The 17th crews in is...
This is from 3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00.
And closed from 2:30 to 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
And they will have a raffle which will benefit the Food Pantry.
Are you wanting a motion right now?
Yeah, council so wishes, I mean, that's one of the things that, I don't think anyone has gotten back to them yet about this, about allowing it. I know I talked to Chief about it in the gym, but I thought that we should actually have it.
That also obviously requires the street...
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that we allow the street closure on October 17th.
September.
September 17th from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Lutzko?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
I'm second.
Yes.
Okay, council has approved the closing of the street for the car show.
Okay, thank you, council. The other thing, two things on there. Wendy mentioned the art walk on October 5th. I do not know the times on that yet, she did not tell me, but I'm assuming it's probably gonna be most of the time. And then there's also gonna be a meet the candidates night at OU E on October 11th. I do not know the time for that either, but I'm sure she'll have that set up. Meetings, have had 13 meetings since the last council meeting, down from a little bit before. Completed projects, last Friday, we were awarded a $40,000 workers' comp grant for equipment. So the plan is, what we're gonna do is combine that with the $10,000 grant that we have from the Ohio EPA already, and we're gonna buy a back trailer and valve exerciser. So instead of the guys loading this equipment back up in the back of the truck, taking up all the room in the back of the truck, this is actually on a trailer, they'll be able to pull it around and have access to all this stuff. So it's a pretty good, pretty good grant haul in that we got on that one. Water nodes, I know before I've mentioned that, you know, the water nodes and meters are a constant thing. So far, I think this is, I was gonna ask Anita, but she's not here. So far since I've been here, we've replaced 217 of them. We get six to 10 new ones a month that need to be replaced. We just haven't been able to have the manpower to get them all done at the same time, so we're working on those. Both the 1982, the light valve tank, and the 1929, the which has had, were cleaned internally last week. We drained them out, hosed them out, got everything out. Was in pretty good shape. There will be a report submitted by the company, once that comes in, I'll give that to you guys. We also had the Neff Street property closing, the two properties down there. Had another EPA meeting on the Dorothy water tank. We're still waiting on the paperwork from the owners for the negotiated construction easements for the West End water line, which is gonna start soon. I-70, as the mayor mentioned, all the hookups are completed, the traffic control's been removed, they're cleaning up the site. I did wanna explain that with the initial 48-hour boil order was because we had the shutdowns. The boil order got extended as a precaution because on Wednesday night, the mayor mentioned we had a water line break. Literally, the pipe that they connected to broke about three feet from right where they connected. So, not really contractor's fault, but it was one of the things there, they had one of their guys there and we were using his equipment and got it all done. All the bacteria testing did come back all clear, so that it was just more of a precaution than anything, but still, we'll be safe with that. Still waiting on the federal EPA corrections for the inspection report. I sent them, submitted corrections back with a couple of the things for clarification, haven't gotten anything back from that yet. The main water distribution project, all the residents in Spring Park are now hooked up to the new service lines. They are patching the pavement up there. They are also working down the north side of Route 40 East and working on Barton and Walnut, Walnut Street. We will have a construction meeting this week. Still working with the contractor for notifications and things. Literally, my water line number break went from 30 to 31 this afternoon after I had this printed, because they hit another one. Just kind of the par for the course, it's nothing that they're really doing on purpose, it's just one of those back and forth things. Under upcoming projects, the rec center HVAC unit has been ordered since the last meeting to our wastewater plant, the HVAC unit died. So we were able to get one of those ordered also. Still working on some of the easements for the water distribution project. Efall sewer pump station, working on getting the second pump ready to install, so we have a backup down there. As mentioned with the distribution project, they're gonna be doing some additional water line work down on Walnut. We found some older pipes and it, you know, we're just gonna get that replaced now and have it all good. Paving, I've got all the mapping done for the last, the water breaks in the last 10 years, now coordinating that with what the engineer has done with us. The big sinkhole at Central Park, we submitted for a grant for that, it's actually a combination grant loan. Total project, we're anticipating to be about $630,000. We submitted the grant for about $226,000, the rest will be a low-interest loan. If anyone wants to see any of that information or stuff, we have that packet here that they can come look at. Working with the engineer on the bypass road, we were notified of another sinkhole this morning, corner of McFadden. So guys are gonna work on that, try and get that done. We've still got the one of Thompson, Johnette, and Jefferson. Working on additional pulvers for Spring Park, so that once the contractor gets out of there completely, we can camera all the stuff and figure out what's going on there. Route 40 water line extension project is gonna kick off as soon as the contractor finishes up with the I-70 project and we get the easements back from the project, or the property owners. Water distribution, as we're going through and finding locates, we're doing door hangers and utility locates, but also doing code red for when the areas, to notify the citizens of what's going on. We're trying to keep everybody in loop as much as possible. I was working with Elizabeth this morning on the county water agreement. Got an HR meeting later this week to look at the administrative policies and procedures. Ask me contract negotiations, the union has the contract, they're gonna meet September 13th to vote upon it. I was gonna have copies to give to council to review beforehand, but I wanted to note that they're not for public review since they're not approved by the union yet. But I had the water line break and got pulled out of my office before my new assistant could have them printed for me. So if council wants to see them or have any conversations on it, just set up a meeting, come in and look at them. Still working with the water tanks, on repairing some of the issues that we have with some of the stuff, the minor things. Department-wise, pretty much all the same. All the way down through water line breaks, we hit 31 and 17 of them caused by the distribution project, and we had one caused by the I-70 work, that was last Wednesday. Smoke testing, we are working on the letters, they should be out in the next couple weeks. Sewerless station repairs, still working on those. Street department, they're painting and patching, doing what they can. I think they only have, what, two guys today, 'cause of vacations and things. Rec Center, I haven't had a chance to talk to Eric yet, I think the B issue down at the building's been taken care of. Police, I'll let Matt kind of go more in-depth in this if he wants to, but we had an issue this weekend, two of our officers. Some of you may know, there was a high-speed chase through the city with a stolen car. They are currently on light duty until they're medically cleared, so if you wanna throw them in your thoughts and prayers, it'd be appreciated. Nothing major, you know, probably some concussion symptoms, but... And then the last thing, good of the city, the traffic control has been removed from Eschbaur Road.
Amen.
And that's everything.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
You mentioned new assistant, did you hire a new assistant?
Yes, hired a new assistant. Roberta has not officially resigned, she's not really retiring, because she has obtained another job for, with the county where she's moving. So we're still working on the details of that, and she was moving today. So she started last week, and then we also hired a new guy for the electric department. And also, we've agreed to terms with a lady that will be taking the opening in the utility office.
Who, like, who is your new assistant?
Belina Moscato.
Then Roberta is still...
She's still technically here, but like, she was off today, so we're working out the details. The plan is that she would come in and be able to...
Mentor her.
Mentor, so she's not just thrown into the fire, but also take all the stuff that needs to be filed and file all of that stuff in the office to get that filed away and law.
Will you keep us updated on her, Fandevay, or...
Yes.
Be nice to...
Yep.
Wish her well.
Yep. Any update on the drawing, so the rec center? I have the initial drawings, I do not have the revised ones yet. I'm still working on getting for the wall where we're gonna put the door in, to get that cemented.
Then is there any chance of paving at Spring Park this year?
Probably not this year, they're patching it now. They were taking a lot longer in there than I thought they would, thought we might have some chances to get it in, but I think what we're probably gonna do is shoot for the next spring, have it, have the package out ready hopefully in January, and then as soon as the weather breaks, just get them in and take care of it. 'Cause there's some other water issues that we have to address there too, and some of that is with our pulvers and things. Some of it is just the pitch of the road, we just gotta watch, because if the road's pitched a certain way, it sheds the water into people's yards, and we're trying to prevent that. So we've got a plan coming through, we just need to get everything else out of the way.
I have to go on and see the patching, but will the patching get us through the winter?
Patching should get us through the winter, yeah.
Do we have, we have money in the budget for paving?
Yes, I do believe we put some in there to watch. And we were hoping to be able to get up in the Spring Park area and some of those other ones.
And if we can't get to it because there could be other road work, we wouldn't wanna dig up patching, is that something that could be bid now? And so we'd be ready to go the minute the weather broke?
We would have to get all the specs and get it figured out, which way we're gonna pitch the road and things, that's one of the things I've been working on with the street superintendent, is trying to figure out, okay, if we pitch the road this way, we're gonna have to put a catch basin in here. If we do it this way, we can not have a catch basin here, but we're gonna have one down here, and then we've gotta make sure the ditch flows this way. So we're trying to look at all of that, going through it, so I would love to say yes, but I highly doubt it, just from a timing standpoint, I mean, that's, I...
Would it come to be to be able to do it then now, 'cause I know the price of this fault goes up and down?
It goes up and down, but that's why, that's why you try to have it in December or January, and then you bid it, and then, 'cause they're setting up the work for the year too. A lot of the problems that we have now, if we bid something now, is the contractors might have all their work ready already, and so they would keep pushing us back, which is what happened when we did South Marietta. That contractor, we weren't ready yet, and when we bumped them back, we went to the end of the line, and then they came back in December and said, "Yeah, hey, we're ready," and we're like, "Ooh, okay."
Yeah, I just wanted, like, I completely appreciate that we wouldn't wanna do something and then have to dig it up. I mean, that's why we haven't done anything.
Yeah.
But I wanna be ready to go.
Oh, yes.
We've got the money in the budget and we wanna pave a little bit every year, especially after we ripped it up, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have several streets this year. Now, the only problem is gonna be that most of them are gonna be, the majority of the east end of the city. So we're looking to see if there's other streets and areas where maybe we have newer water lines and things that we can do. I know, I talked to Councilwoman Butler about some of the alleys that we don't have water lines in, that, you know, maybe that might be a possibility too, where we can come in and go through that and get it. It's just gathering everything together to make sure it all works out.
And how many people applaud for this assistant position?
Five.
And who did the interviews? And who did the interviews?
Me, Tom, and Roberta.
And the contract, if you're gonna want us to... So the next meeting is, what, the 18th?
Yep.
Of September? And there won't be expected a decision on the 18th?
It would be nice, but I also know you need multiple time to read, that's why I was trying to get it to you tonight to go through it. I'll get it to you probably tomorrow, if nothing else.
So we'll be in our boxes?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody just know that, so that if you can stop up here and grab it.
What I'll do is I'll put in, here's an unedited version, and then here's one where everything's highlighted that got changed, so you'll know what was modified.
So whoever's making the copies, right? So watermark them confidential?
Good idea.
We can try, we should be able to.
Whoever's making the copy should know how to watermark them confidential?
Yeah.
Because they, it's imperative that they are not released pre-voting on them.
Yes.
So I want to be crystal clear, right? Because there have been leaks...
Yes.
Among...
Correspondence.
Correspondence. And correspondence don't just leak by themselves, they just say that and say that this cannot be disseminated past for whose eyes they are to be, you know, so... So please mark it so that it is clear that it is confidential not to be shared, you know, because we can't have this leak, right? So, okay, and then you had said you had a meeting on the Dorothy tank, what's the status there, what's going on with the water tank?
Basically, I'm still trying to get some clarification from the EPA. We answered the NOB by saying that we were gonna disconnect this tank from the system. I asked them for a little bit more time to the end of last month because of the tank cleanings and the I-70 project, I knew that was coming in, going through, but in the meantime, last week while we were waiting, the engineer dropped this off, it's now a...
Is it a quick sum?
Yes, it is a, signed by the head engineer, is a project manager, 82823, with a submission, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency permit to install, submit it, 82823. So this is hard proof that I didn't lie about.
How do you, how do you, this is a rhetorical question, not my answer, so I'm gonna say, how do you have a permit to install something that you installed four years ago?
I don't, that's why I'm still waiting to see, that's why I still won't have an answer yet, because I'm asking the EPA that, and I don't have an answer yet.
Are we continuing to pursue legal remedies?
Yes.
Let's all have my questions.
Anyone else have any questions for the Service Director?
What's the status with the alleys? I saw the manhole covers were marked.
We've got them marked, we haven't had a chance to put a camera on yet, because we've been running around. As soon as we do that, the nice thing about with the sewer lines though, in some of those areas, if they're big enough, we technically wouldn't have to dig them up. So we, if we need to line them, we could get into manholes and do it, it's just a matter of getting them, so that we can get them raised up to see what's going on differently.
I'm just asking if it's reasonable that they're taken care of before winter?
That might be a stretch.
Okay, what can we do if they can't be taken care of? What can be done, 'cause they have to be?
We can patch them again, and then what I'd like to do is actually have that included, because that's one of the areas that is not in the east side of the city when we do the paving package, and then literally have it all thrown in. Here it is, so we've got 10, eight, nine, 10 streets if possible that go through, 'cause some of those aren't gonna be nearly as bad as, you know, where we paved Edinburgh last year. That was a complete rebuild. Some of those, we should just be able to patch or just pave over the top of the existing stuff and not have to do a complete rebuild. So that's kind of the plan with that. And I haven't heard back from ODOT, I played phone tag with the guy, he called me one time, I called him back about the guardrail.
I figured that's gonna be a no, but what I was asking for, more so at this point, were the reflector signs to go, you know, like, anything.
Oh.
Like to follow, you know, the, I know Donnie had spoken with someone, and I know they're really strict on the guardrail thing, the posts, the, you know, all the things that were mentioned. However, if we can't do any of those things, you know, you see where the sharp turns of different roads and places where they follow a row of reflector, just to bring attention to it, if we don't do anything else because of liability...
I can check on that, see.
If nothing else, you know, follow the sign kind of thing, don't wreck into this house.
I know we've been working with ODOT on hospital signs... I know we've been working with ODOT on hospital signs for Trinity, so they kind of, that's one of the ones that they definitely throw kind of home rules to us, so that might not be out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the posts and the guardrails are a definite no-go because of liability and things like that, you know, other options, that would be the next one in my mind, unless there's something better, just attention to the turn of road. That's a blind, that's a blind drop-off if it starts.
Yeah. Yeah, one more question up. I know several months ago, we met with the, all the garbage companies in St. Clairsville, and talking about light trucks, more routes, whatever. Before we started any paving, is there any, anything or anything to meet on again with them?
Basically, what, you know, what they came back with most of them was that the city would have to, uh, contract out for one provider.
Yeah.
Which I don't think that's a good thing anytime I've ever talked to municipality about it, and they said they've done that. As soon as the contract's up, they just let it go back to everybody again, so that everyone can kinda pick. Um, one of the things that we're looking at doing though, is some of these areas where we have big problems, the cul-de-sacs and these things, we're not gonna asphalt them anymore. We're just gonna concrete them.
Oh.
Yeah, we're just gonna put concrete in, and, and there's a reason why, if you look at like most gas stations around the pumps where you have cars that pull in all the time or in there, it's concrete, and then they asphalt the roadway around it. They don't, uh, asphalt that where it's gonna get the heavy traffic.
Then is there any way to maybe look at a few of the alleys, maybe to keep them out of the alleys, but I don't know if that's possible?
That, that goes back to more of, of a preference of where somebody wants to put their trash can, um, I don't even know.
I don't think that that's really possible though in some of the alleys, cause like my alley, they have to go down that alley because that's their, like, some of them don't have another place to take the trash out.
Like on the main road, or the main part of the main road?
Yeah, I don't think there's any, I mean, we, we can check and see, but I mean, that, that would be a conversation to have with them for rallying things, but, but every time we ask them anything about it, they say, well, just, just let us do the whole city. And it's like, eh.
I don't know what that-
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I do know, like, the cross from my place in St. David Alley, one of the Cross Butler, uh, one of the garbage companies do go up that alley all the way up and pick up trash along behind the-
That alley's gonna, that alley's in the distribution, so that'll, that'll be redone.
Did the city ever do its own trash?
I don't think.
Never?
City had a dump, other than that, no.
Say it again?
City had a dump, but never picked up trash.
It used to be where the ballfields are on, uh, or part of the extension, where they, uh, actually there's fields there now, but that used to be the old city dump. That's, people just took it out. I imagine they paid the city to dump there, but it was private companies that dumped it three years ago.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Move on to Police Chief Pat Arbenz, Matt Dinkelman.
Good evening, council. Uh, numbers for August were three hundred and seventy-eight calls for service, ten crashes, twenty-one arrests by warrants served, three domestics, and seventy-three traffic stops. As Jeremy mentioned briefly this past Saturday, uh, two of our officers were involved in high-speed pursuit, and unfortunately, both of them got a little bit dinged up. They were treated and released at Wheeler Hospital, uh, with concussions, and should be cleared to return to duty next week. Cruisers are in the process of getting evaluated, uh, by the insurance company, and estimates should be back tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get at least one of them back on the road pretty quick.
They're expected to make four recoveries?
Yeah.
Was the suspect apprehended?
Yes.
Is there a police vehicle out of service now, or?
Two.
Two, or out of service?
Yeah.
How's that affecting things?
Uh, the, the old Crown Vic, we brought it back, uh, so that's gonna be the school resource officer's vehicle for a while.
Is it towed?
Pardon me, are the vehicles towed? Don't know yet.
Okay.
No, estimates should be in tomorrow. We're hoping the frame's fine then.
Are, yeah, are regards to the officers?
I will.
Okay.
Well, I understand, Matt, that was Sheriff's Department, State Patrol, and you guys, right?
And Barnes though.
And Barnes, so somebody told the daycare goodbye on the interstate, and it must be more than a hundred miles an hour.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a listen.
Any other comments or questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, Matt. Move on to Finance Director, and, well, Lou.
Good evening, everyone. Nothing new to report, other than all the stuff that Jeremy talks about every week, all the projects and everything that Dana and I have a ton of paperwork in the financial office that we take care of, so that's all.
Okay, anybody have any questions for?
Did you have emailed the audit? We need to review that, is there? That was not, that was a confidential record also?
It was, yeah. So it's a draft form, and I haven't heard anything back. It'll come back in final form from the Auditor of State.
Okay.
It is submitted to the Auditor of State, so it's still confidential level. If you guys have any questions, you can email me and ask.
Uh, are we gonna have a post audit? I think I told Tara to ask me.
She did check that, so, um, I guess you guys have to set up a time when you would wanna have that.
Is that part of the finance committee or separate?
It could be for anyone.
It could be either or, whoever wants to attend. There's any questions?
Would you make it part of the finance, I guess is what I'm wondering. Would that be set?
We could do that if it's, if the auditors could.
Oh, cause you have that, I got you.
If they're available.
I mean, we could try to set it up, like at the finance, you know, it would have to, cause it's still not, um, not public, so I'll ask-
Well, after it's public, we can-
I'll ask Matt if we can still probably do it then, so then it would just be a, a part of a public meeting to, and so.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Any other comments or questions for the Finance Director? Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Move on to Planning and Zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, thanks, Jim. Just to kinda reiterate, uh, a little of what Catherine mentioned and Matt Arbenz, I was at the intersection of Route forty and Viking Drive, just across from Sheet, just stopped at a red light when, uh, the cars flew by, and one of them, which I thought was undercover, Matt filled me and said, no, that was the guy who stole the car. Uh, but it was a pretty, I mean, intense scene, I mean, they were flying by at probably fifty, sixty miles an hour. Um, and just shows you the, you know, what a tough and stressful job it is when you're just watching it, that's one thing. When you're involved in it, that's a totally separate thing. These guys are involved in that every day. Uh, a situation like that, that's off, you know, that'd be stressful to deal with. Uh, I did wanna also mention, the mayor had talked about Charlie Bean. He was an important member of two of my boards, the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. As a member of these boards, he always offered good legal advice, um, and he was looked up to by the other members. New members kind of, how he operated during the course of the meeting, and he was a good example for them. He was honest, and he was an integral part of the legal and law enforcement community of Belmont County, and he will be missed by the greater St. Clairville community. So he's not only important to us here at the city, but also, uh, the entire community at large, so he'll be a big loss. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they will meet Thursday, September twenty-eighth, at six PM here in the Municipal Building. Uh, the only item on the agenda is the Cumberland Trail Fire District, um, Fire Hat, Firehouse Expansion Project. They are requesting variances related to the required setbacks, structure height signage and other site-related variances. All are welcome to attend if you, if you wanna stop in, kinda take a look at what I have always. If you can't make the meeting, you can do that. Uh, just contact me if you have any questions now, feel free to do that as well. Uh, the Door Committee designated outdoor refreshment area, uh, met on August twenty-third. Christie, J.C., and Beth are members of that committee. Christie will give a short report as part of her being on the Planning Commission, um, but if any, that, J.C., if you wanna chime in at some point, you certainly can. Uh, the committee did set up another meeting for Tuesday, April seventeenth, at six PM, uh, here at the Municipal Building. Uh, the committee is encouraging-
Tom, that's not April.
Did I say April?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, twenty twenty-five, oh, wait, no. October seventeenth at six PM, uh, a few months off. Uh, the committee is encouraging members of the public and all city council members to attend, even if you're there just to gather information, it's a good thing, cause ultimately you would be making a decision on that one way or the other. Uh, this'll help educate yourselves, and, uh, it would be a good thing to be at. Uh, last item, uh, the Home of One-O-One Woodrow Avenue, that was destroyed by fire earlier in the years. In the process of being demolished, uh, this project was delayed, uh, due to the time it took to get the property, uh, in the proper executor's name, or however legally it's done, so, uh, that wasn't ultimately, uh, completed. And then it also took a while, cause then the insurance company had to get involved, obviously, and the adjuster had to get together to finalize all the requirements that they have. Good news is, unfortunately, it takes a lot of time, uh, but it's in the process of being torn down, so, uh, I'll open it up to any questions.
What, uh, this might be, this question for everybody, I guess. Uh, I knew Charlie was on several committees. Do we have to obviously replace him? I'm not sure where that is, or?
Um, it's not something at this point in time you guys have to worry about. We do have the ability to have a forum, for example, the next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Charlie was the, uh, Planning Commission wreck, um, how do they word it? He was, one of the Planning Commission members has to be appointed by the Planning Commission to be on Board of Zoning Appeals, so he was that member, that's why he was on both of those. Uh, you know, I, it's too soon to, um, ask maybe one of those members now, but I was gonna do that in the future to see if one of them was interested in being that member of the Planning Commission on Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, then once we have that rectified, then we'll work on the, uh, any other replacements that might be necessary.
So that won't hold up any progress on anything?
No, no, we have, uh, plenty on each board. I have a forum. Uh, I make sure when we do set up a meeting that we have a forum present, so legally, uh, everything's done properly.
Good question. Um, with the fire redone, sorry. Uh, with the fire, this, the firehouse expansion, do we foresee any issues with that?
Uh, I don't expect so. Some of the variances they're requesting are to help out the neighborhood. For example, they're gonna have a new parking lot or expand their parking lot behind the existing firehouse now, and as you know, that's right up against residential, uh, residential neighborhood. So they're saying, hey, we don't wanna fully light the parking lot like code might require, and that's one of the reasons, is they don't wanna light up people's homes like it's, uh, um, the middle of the day during the night, so, uh, so many of them are logical. Uh, setback variances, many of those setbacks that they're requesting, an existing structure that's theirs or nearby, it's already pushing that need for a variance. It's a very small lot, so, uh, you never know when you have a public hearing, but I think things will move forward. This is a public safety structure, and, uh, the whole idea behind the expansion is to modernize and then have, if you've been on the inside of the structure now, you know, it's almost embarrassing that they don't have the proper facilities. We, we need to make sure they have, uh, a proper facility for the-
Yeah, it was this administration that allowed them to have the building so that they could do it.
Yeah.
So, no argument here, I just wanna make sure there were no obstacles.
And anybody is welcome to attend, and, you know, Bush, you can do that. If you build a positive project, you can do that.
When is that meeting? What time?
Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is not in April. Um, it's Thursday, uh, September twenty-eighth at six PM.
And that's the fire?
No, that would be right here at City Council. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, uh, this brings us to council committees, uh, I do wanna run something by you real quick, uh, which I neglected to put under correspondence. Uh, I talked to Elizabeth about this earlier. We did receive a correspondence from a, uh, let me get the name here, cause I got it, Corey Campagnese, and basically what they were doing was wanting to, uh, do a public reading, uh, on the-
Did we get it?
Okay, this is, uh, I'll let Jacob read this to you, because it's, uh, he's better at public speaking than I am.
At words?
At words, yes.
So just before, you, what's the date of this?
I'm sorry?
What's the date of this?
We don't have dates yet.
We don't have dates yet. It's going to be-
Where did they send us this?
Uh, what's the date on there, Jacob?
August twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Okay.
Uh, what I did run by, uh, Elizabeth to make sure, uh, this is going to take place strictly on county property, and will not be on sidewalks or any city property, so she said our approval is not needed, but, uh, they have to get permission from the county commissioners, which apparently they've done, but, uh, I'll let Jacob read this. This is basically just to let everybody know what's going on and why.
Greetings, St. Clairville City Council. My name is Corey Campagnese, and I'm reaching out on behalf of a small group of Belmont County citizens who have been preparing and working to present several select historical civil rights speeches through a public reading forum in the area of Belmont County Courthouse Concourse. We want to ensure that we do not have conflicting space obligations for this series of readings, as well as permission to use a public address PA system that will not conflict with existing city ordinances. The planned public readings will require approximately two hours to complete during each date in September and October. In use during our public reading will be a, will be two twenty-by-twenty temporary folding canopies, one for the speaker and one for the audience, several folding chairs, a speaking podium with a microphone, a graphic backdrop with two satellites, uh, signage, several electrical extension cords for the PA system, a camera tripod for use in securing a smartphone for social media live reading. Thank you for your time and consideration. There's no gates.
They also basically just wanna make sure there was no violation of the city ordinances, and to make sure that they were not gonna come, uh, have a conflict, uh, people that other, they would already been approved by the city. But again, I read, I read this by Elizabeth, and they are aware that they have to stay completely on county property, they've already supposedly got permission from the commissioners, and they can't use city property without city approval, or they can't use the old jail, or the old sheriff's residence, which is the tourism, that they are gonna be strictly on the concourse of the county property, but we did wanna make sure the council was aware of what it was and why.
We just don't know when.
Oh, hold on, I might have dates.
Well, they were supposed to get us exact dates, it's September and October, but they didn't have the exact dates that they were gonna do it.
So Jen did email us dates.
Okay.
It's September, it's all Sundays, September seventeenth, October first, October fifteenth, October twenty-ninth, and November twelfth.
September seventeenth is the car show.
Car show is the seventeenth on Sunday.
That only gets to the courthouse then.
This, this will, their readings will strictly be on the courthouse concourse and on their property, not on, on any street at all.
Still seems like that's gonna be a conflict there.
A lot of times a car show will have a DJ.
Oh, yeah.
So you might have combating PAs.
I think they need to know that there's a car show that has been scheduled on the seven, and, and meanwhile, we should tell them, no.
At least, yeah, correct.
And so the other dates don't conflict with anything we just did.
And I think they're maybe kindly request that they not interfere with the car show-
Right.
-as that is the small businesses of our uptown district.
Okay, I would get back with her or also Jen to make sure that they are aware that that date could be an issue to use that PA system. to use that PA system.
Well, they could have complete different times, too. I mean, if this is 10 to 12, you know, the car show is 2:30 to 6:30.
So, it's...
It may not, it may be, it may be okay, but they at least need to know that there's a car show.
Right.
That had, I mean, I'm gonna say prior authorization, because, you know, we did it an hour ago, right? So, I mean, it did get mentioned before this.
Again, like I said, unless they are on city property, we...
But if it's competing, they need, if it's competing in PA systems, that's...
Let them know.
Yeah, just to let them know for sure. Okay, we'll move on to the council committees. Finance, Dawn?
Thanks for your report, Matt. I have no report, and the next finance meeting then will be Monday, September 18th at 6:15.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Dawn? Okay, we'll move on to utility. Tara?
The utility meeting was tonight. We had AEP come in. I know all of council was invited. AEP came in and gave us a load of information on battery storage, and I think there is some opportunity to possibly save some money, but I know there's a lot more communication that needs to be had between Jeremy and Donnie and the AEP guys that came in to talk to them. So, I would suggest if anybody has questions about that, probably take them to Jeremy while they're in a conversation with the guys from AEP. And I'm sure as they get more information on that, we'll, we'll get communication about what else transpiring with that. That's it. Next meeting would be September 18th?
I think it's the 15th?
No.
No, September 9th?
October, October 2nd. And be back to regular time at 6:15.
Right. Anybody have any questions for Tara? Okay, we'll move on to police. Mr. Smith?
I have no report, but I'd like to hold a meeting September 18th. That's okay with you, chief? And would Jacob get that in newspaper, maybe 48 hours notice, I believe? Is that right?
Well, if that, that's a regularly scheduled meeting, okay, that's already...
Okay.
I think those meetings are already scheduled for after the regular meeting, so.
Okay. And also, the meeting, I'm gonna, as I always do, ask Matt if he needs anything. Me personally, I'm in favor of as much training. I always support it, and I'm sure it came in handy with the police chase, the driving skills, probably. But, yeah, I'm all for training. But anyway, so we'll have a meeting September 18th, and that will be directly after the regular meeting.
Yeah, that's already a normal meeting, so that doesn't require special notice from the public. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Okay, Streets North Side, Mike, anything on?
I have no report on Streets North Side.
Streets South Side, Mr. Thresh?
No report.
Safety?
No report.
Building and Grounds, Beth, do you have any report?
I do have a report. We had a meeting on August 22nd at 6 o'clock in conjunction with the Junior Sports. Annually in August, the, the city is supposed to have a meeting with the Junior Sports Committee. Junior Sports Committee?
Officers.
Officers. So, they were represented by Matt King, Matt Lukey, and Justin Clifford. And so, I think it was a really good meeting to bring the both groups together. There was a contract that was drawn up in 1988. So, one of our plans is to look at that contract and see if it needs to be updated. But it was also the beginning of a dialogue with how can the city and junior sports be good partners with each other? So, we are looking at ways that we can support the work that they do. Now, we use the Junior Sports Complex also, so it's, it's city property that we just wanna continue to have an open dialogue with Junior Sports. It sounds just off, what is it, Junior Sports People, I don't know, Junior Sports Committee, the Junior Sports, just Junior Sports, just how we can continue to work with them. So, I thought it was a productive meeting, and we will have another meeting at Junior Sports. The next Building and Grounds Committee meeting is gonna be on September 16th at 6 o'clock. And we've invited the Junior Sports representatives to join us again, so that we can continue the dialogue of how we can continue to, to work cooperatively with them.
Did you say September 16th is a Saturday night?
If I said that, then that's wrong.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be, when's the, okay, hang on. So, September, what is this, September now?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm worried. 19th.
Oh.
19th. So, September 19th, it was still 6 o'clock, that's correct. And it is here, that is correct. September is correct. 2023 is correct. The 16th is not, it's the 19th.
You got most of them right.
You know, when you look at it, all that. But I think it was a pretty... It needed to happen, right? So, I, I think I've been on council eight years, and I don't remember a joint committee. You know, a joint meeting between the city. I'm not saying it didn't happen, it just wasn't part of Buildings and Grounds, it wasn't any part of anything that I was part of. So, it's encouraging to, to know that this administration is supportive of being... Working with Junior Sports for the different projects. One of the things we're investigating is the gas and oil money that that's, what, how many acres?
48.
48 acres brings in, and how can we look at some permanent improvements there? How can we help with some of the activities? I mean, we're all about the kids, right? And so, how can we continue to partner with them? So, it's exciting. Questions?
I was there.
The meeting is on the 19th.
I just have one comment off of what Beth said. I think a lot of the past, I don't wanna say animosity, but maybe misunderstandings the part of some of the Junior Sports people and previous administrations. I think they came away from the meeting very encouraged, very pleased with how this administration, and Jeremy in particular, was very receptive. And I just felt like it was a very good meeting, and I think they realized that the city, city council, we all want the same thing. So, it was just, it was a good productive meeting.
I agree. I think anything that the city with the Rec Department can do along with Junior Sports, because it's for the kids. So, whatever maximum we can do to help them, that's, that gets good from both viewpoints.
So, that's public notice, too. More than 48 hours I've given at the next meeting, right? So.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Beth? Okay, we'll move on to planning commission, Christie.
There was a joint meeting with the Building and Grounds that was held on August 23rd of this year on the DORA issue. Lot of ideas tossed around. There was some people from the public here. Several of us are going to contact other similarly sized municipalities who have passed DORA legislation to kind of get some more information, get some more feedback from them. There is another meeting. The next meeting is going to be here on October 17th at 6:00 PM. I personally would like to urge all council members to attend this next meeting. There's going to be a lot of information put forward, a good opportunity to ask questions, and so that if we don't know the answers to those questions, then we will have time to find the answers. It's just, it's gonna be an important issue that council eventually, possibly, might have to vote upon. So, I would like everyone to be informed.
Okay, J.C. contacted me, and somebody that wanted to attend had some information on that. So, I told him to make sure that they know when that meeting is to attend that, that meeting. I don't know if J.C. got ahold of her yet, but...
And I, and I know, you know, again, I'm gonna repeat what I said at the last meeting. I scroll through Facebook. Lots of people commenting a lot of misinformation. Maybe it might be correct information, and they're putting their feelings, but that is not the official forum to bring things to committee members' attention. It's not the correct place to bring things to council members' attention. I welcome phone calls, emails. My phone number is listed on the city's website, and so is my email. I welcome communications from the citizens. That's my job. I know Beth feels the same way. But we can't, we're not gonna respond to things on Facebook.
I never do. That's, that's, that's a losing proposition either way.
Yeah, I'll just add to what Christie's saying, that we're very much in the information gathering stage. You know, Tom has given us some information, like Christie said, that we're gonna do some more research. Like J.C. found someone that can come give us some more information. So, it really would be in council's, you know, I mean... It could be in council's best interest to come to that meeting and hear from yourself. I mean, we'll, the committee will end up making a recommendation one way or the other, right? But we're still very much in the information gathering stage, so.
What was that, Dave? Sorry. Because I thought Tom said the 18th.
Uh, no, October 17th.
17th?
Yeah.
It's not on the 16th of September?
Yeah, that's why J.C. always says this person has some previous knowledge of things that it's good for them to come to the, to the committee meeting, so they can present that to the committee. Anything else, Christie?
No, that's, that's all for planning commission.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Christie?
Christie?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Linda's not here, Fire District, Christie, Recreation Department.
Yes. Crafton Vendor Fair will be held this Saturday at the Rec Center from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's inside the Rec Center. And also, the Rhythm and Brew's Fall Fest starts at 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. There's three bands, food trucks, beverage station. It's gonna be the last concert of the year. Hopefully, everyone will take advantage. These are really nice events. The last one was not very well attended, I think probably because of the back-to-school events that were happening. It was probably just a little bit too much. But these are a lot of fun, and, you know, I know Eric Gay puts a lot of energy and work into making these successful, so try to mark your calendars.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Saturday, starting at 4:00 PM.
This Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Like this?
September 9th, yep. Three, three bands. And the next meeting for the Rec Board is September 21st at 4:30 PM.
Christie, anybody have any comments or questions?
What time is it? Sorry.
For the meeting?
No.
Well, the Crafton Vendor Fair is from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the Rhythm and Brew's Fall Fest is from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
And I can't say the concerts that I've attended have been very, very awesome evenings, and very enjoyable. And anybody that I talked to who was at them enjoyed them immensely. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Next would be Linda from the Park District. She's not here this evening. I do know that I think Labor Day was the last day that the pools opened. Other than that, I don't know of anything. Anybody have any other comments or questions on anything you wanna bring up? Got no ordinance for resolutions this evening. So, hearing nothing, the next meeting will be Monday, September 18th at 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
We got a motion to adjourn, thank you.